Want to call the meeting board here? This one usually listens to Jason. Unfortunately, Jason won't be able to make it tonight. He had a prior engagement he couldn't get out of. So just jump right in. So we do have a visitor. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Anne Walker, Group 4.
Just visiting, or would you like to add anything?
Just visiting.
Okay. Let's see. Look for an entertain a motion to accept the minutes from last month, number 18. And a second. And we have a second.
Let's see if there's any discussion.
Any discussion on that? I've only been to 30 or so of these meetings. Between John and Jason, I just listened. Okay, so we do a roll call. Just all in favor.
You can do all in favor because it's in person.
Okay. All in favor? Accept the minutes? The yeses have. Okay. School committee correspondence. We get the class action lawsuit, the ATRIPPLEF issue. Peter, would you like to discuss the ATRIPPLEF class action lawsuit?
I can do that. We received that information at the school. I was instructed to speak with the fire department to see if they had any knowledge of it. I spoke to Captain Shostin. They said they used to carry a form on their trucks that contained that material. Said they haven't used it in probably above seven plus years since they discovered that it has some cancer causing elements to it. That was the extent. John even said forgive me, that's all the information I have. He said it has been used in over seven years.
Okay. I'm vaguely familiar with the ATRIPPLEF. Just being in the military, they use this stuff in the Navy on aircraft carriers. And it's just, it's great for suppressing fire, but it's awful for human life. So the, so I did hear loosely about some different class action lawsuits. I didn't look too much into it. I hadn't thought that it was going to really pertain to school business. So being long since removed from the Navy, it didn't warrant me digging into it. So unfortunately, I can't speak too much to it. But I believe we're looking for a vote for, to authorize Peter to proceed further with this class action lawsuit. In the event that this does come to a settlement, the school would be entitled to some of the resources that come out of that. So can I get a motion to authorize Peter to move forward with this class action? To be a party to the class action lawsuit.
Do we qualify for it?
That's part of his proceedings.
Was it something to do with drinking water?
It's an overall class action lawsuit for any school district affected by this, whether we were actually affected by it or not. We were subject to it because our fire trucks carried it. As Peter said, it hasn't been used in seven or eight years. But nonetheless, if there is a settlement and we're a party to it, we would get a small cut of whatever small settlement it was. So this motion would be for Peter to pursue this, our participation in the class action lawsuit, which would be at no cost to us.
I was gonna say, what are resources we're just using?
Essentially, we'll say.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? See no discussion? All in favor? I, I'm okay. The ayes have it. New business? Do we have any new business?
So the town meeting item that passed, Jason Fraser did a wonderful job presenting the article to the town with regards to incorporating pre-K into the Silver Lake Regional Agreement. And that article did pass. It also passed at Kingston. So our next, our next step is a vote at the Halifax Town Meeting, which is in December.
December 14th, is that right? Any reason they waited so long, or just that's when their next meeting was?
I think that's when they had scheduled their, their meeting to occur.
It just, it just seems to be awful close to the deadline.
So we did ask for a potential rain date. Because we are nervous about the deadline as well.
Yeah. It gives two weeks. So take or take a bit.
So we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any unfinished business? We have the, the dog use on the Denit fields. Are we anywhere with that, Peter? Any changes? I know I was here on Saturday and plenty of dogs. They were very much in abundance.
From my perspective during the week, but I think again, the issue is on many things.
Yeah. And what about the playground? The third-party certification and the funding?
I do have some information on that. So our, the company that completed the task first, completing the playground and the surfacing, well, there were two separate companies that did the surfacing and the playground. The company that did the surfacing, because they were involved in the design of the playground, could not certify the playground because it would be a conflict of interest if they did it. When they did the surfacing installation, they confirmed that the playground was, is as expected. It was installed as expected, as was the surfacing. I asked about pursuing additional certifications and they said we could pursue that. For, to have the playground certified would be about $1,500 fee. And I did receive some names of local companies that did that type of work. And then for the certification, I also received some information on that. It's about a $4,000 fee because of the specialized equipment they need to have to be able to assess the playground surface. So I did, and I also received a couple of names on that as well. So if we chose to pursue that, I do have some information that we could use to move forward with that, if this committee so decided.
And that third-party certification is for our benefit? It has nothing to do with the original installation?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the consensus on that? Is that something that is recommended? Or is it a, is it a warranty issue that if we don't have the certification?
The warranty is separate because they have confirmed that everything was installed according to plan. And so that's a, that's a separate issue. I have spoken to the person that we've worked with. Of course, they're saying that they don't think that it's, they've confirmed that it's been installed as specified. So they don't, they don't see the value of that. And I spoke to the designer and he did not express an opinion either way.
Okay. So what is the value of having this third-party certification?
I think it could be for peace of mind. It would eliminate any questions. That's, that's what I'm assuming.
If they're alive, they would if died if somebody were to be injured, if there wasn't any sort of certification.
If the playground was installed according to specifications, so we did not have a hazard, that would, it would have to be negligent for that to be something that would be pursued against the town.
What is the actual third-party certification? Is it for safety? Is it for what exactly?
I think, I think he's looping back to my question about, will that impede our warranty? Or any, is there, is there a downside to us if we don't do it? Because it seems like a great expense for something that's not necessary.
I hear the downside would just, would be that there could be some, some folks may have some lingering questions. I'm good or bad, or they may have some lingering questions. And I think this could, you know, I, this is the first playground I've done. So I've, I don't have a lot of experience with that. And at the outset, that was not something that was specifically mentioned as one of the steps that we would have to go through.
It's not like it's an occupancy certificate. The kids can still use it. They're safe.
Correct.
There's no liability for any exposure or additional risk to the town or the Denit. I'm just curious.
They have confirmed that it was installed according to specifications. That's not quite, not quite the same thing. That, you know, that and getting a certification of the surface and the playground are not quite the same thing.
So like, for example, if the surfacing starts to pond or there's divots in it and you're having your surfer installer saying, no, I did it per specifications, it's done, it's fine. They can say that till they're blue in the face. If you have somebody else come in and they're going to run specs, they're going to do the cals, they're going to look at everything and they're going to say, no, there is an issue existing here and it needs to be remedied. That gives us a recourse to go back and get it fixed.
Well, wouldn't the?
Your installer is going to say it's done.
Yeah. I mean, obviously. But, I mean, we're going to know that they didn't install it correctly if it starts to pit and puddle.
You might not know that right now, though.
And how long is our warranty?
So the test is going to be this winter.
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'll have to find that out.
Okay.
It's usually standard one year for certification? No, for the warranty of the surface.
I guess to Kate's point, if it's winter, we have an issue. If you have a third-party certification, what kind of timeline recourse do you have to go back to the installer with that third-party certification?
You'd have coverage to the back to the installer. So what happened last winter was with that really bad cold snap, we had a lot of playgrounds failed that had been installed because it just moved to the surfacing. So a lot of people went back. The original installers had to fix them under warranty at no cost to district.
Have they been all right before the winter? I'm just wondering, were they okay before?
Standardly, they're fine.
So it was just the weather, that the weather did that?
Really one cold day that we had last year, boom, a lot of stuff statewide.
And does the, and you might not know this, but will the third-party certification in any way extend our warranty?
I don't think that will extend our warranty, but it at least gives some additional assurance.
And what were the, what was the cost again?
1,500 for the playground and the equipment itself to be certified. 4,000, these are approximately, approximately 4,000 for the surfacing. Because I think there are, the availability of the companies as it is.
Four total or 55 for both?
So 15 for one and 4,000 for the other, so 55 in total.
Just my opinion, I'm thinking that's an excessive expenditure for them to tell us something that we'll probably find out in the next few months anyhow. And if it's not going to affect our warranty, extend our warranty. I think we could better serve that 4, 5, 500 dollars somewhere else. So if somebody wants to make a motion one way or the other, we can entertain it. But that's, that's my opinion. If no one wants to make a motion, we'll table it.
Yeah, I just wish I had some more, like if, more information on whether or not it's advised, or what do other people do with it days, right?
Then I would suggest that we table it for the next meeting and we can do some digging around prior to the next meeting. So we're going to table that for now. Reports of standing committees, administrative review.
There was a meeting on September 28th and the subcommittee reviewed my goals. In your packet, there is a copy of a memo that outlines the goals for the upcoming year. No, you're all set. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about that report for the goals? See no questions? We move forward. We have a policy, we have our policy reviews, a whole list of them. And they were sent out with the packet. I hope everybody got a chance to peruse them. They do have tracked changes in them. If anybody has any questions. I'd entertain a motion to waive the reading of each policy individually, please. So do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? The ayes have it. So we're going to waive the reading of the policies.
Do you need to read the letters of the policies into record?
Yeah. So, well, that was the second part. We're hoping to get this considered the first read. Okay. Before we go any further, does anybody have any questions that need to be answered about the policies? Any policy in particular? See enough? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider this the first read of the policy. And I will accept the motion for the first read on policy BEDH, public comment at school committees, GBEDCD, staff physical contact with students, IGB, student services program, IHAMA, parental notification relative to sex education, IHBF, homebound instruction, IHBG, homeschooling, IHBH, alternative school programs, IJ, instructional materials, IJ-R, reconsideration of instructional resources, ILD, surveys, notes from policy meeting, and JLCE, allergy policy revised. I will accept a motion, entertain a motion to consider this the first read on each of those policies. So try a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Any, any report on negotiation, standing committees, negotiation report? Union 31? The PAC meeting was supposed to be Thursday, but it was canceled. It was, reason being, it had to do with the accountant. Just give me one second. I received a text on Tuesday morning canceling the Pilgrim Area Collaborative Board meeting because the financial auditors wouldn't be ready until our December 7th meeting. And that was the gist, was to go over the financial audit. So the expectation is the auditor will be ready on December 7th and we will vote to accept the audit report at that time. So at our next meeting after December 7th, I'll have a PAC update. Any capital improvement? Updates?
Principal Veneto will be working with Michaelis on a, on capital requests and present them to the committee. Usually in January.
Okay. And legislative, we don't have because Jason's not here. Just signed a warrant, single signature warrant?
I have a report on that. On September 26th, we had four warrants totaling $46,477.45. That was sent to Superintendent Joe Crew and School Committee Chair Jason Fraser for electronic signature. And on October 23rd, seven warrants totaling $332,358.79, sent to Superintendent Joe Crew and School Committee Chair Jason Fraser for electronic signature. All warrants were signed, returned with signatures, and forwarded to the town hall for payment processing.
Do we have a CASA report? This is moving right on. And Peter, do we have a principal's report?
Absolutely, yes. School update, our current enrollment is 253 students. Our first PAC update, this is the first time I'm happy to report we're actually fully staffed. We have a new art teacher. This is our name, David Rabello. And we will finally fill our building substitute position with Olivia Vieira. This is probably the first time in a year that I've been able to say that we're completely fully staffed at the Denit. And I'd like to keep it that way. One request ahead of the committee. We had two items that were put forward. Considering surplus items, and I was hoping you'd vote the same. We have an old portable PA system, which is, it's pretty much obsolete. It's not, it's not functioning properly. I don't know if any of the warrants spend the time or energy to try to get it working. And we have one of the oldest flat screen television on the south shore, which is, again, it's really kind of obsolete at this point. That's on a rolling cart. It's just picking up a lot of space that we don't have. So I would ask the committee to consider those items to be surplus that we can move along from them.
What does that mean, move along from them?
Dispose them? Is the, is the idea to consider them surplus, Peter, and then dispose of them?
That is correct. Both ways like that.
Okay. And if you're, if you're sure there's no use for them? I'll entertain a motion to deem these surplus.
Yeah. Move on from that.
Okay, second? Okay. All in favor? The ayes have it. Peter, feel free.
We agree with you.
Okay, so we have David, compensation rates and daily substitute employees.
I think Pete had one more item.
Oh, I'm sorry. What's it? I thought that was it.
Is Pete going to be doing an MCAS presentation tonight?
Oh, yeah.
I thought that was going to be my instructions.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Okay. Whatever the chair wishes.
Do you want to do that now, or you just want to come back to it? Who's doing the MCAS update?
Mr. Veneto, are you prepared to share the slides?
I'm waiting.
Yeah, we can do it now. That works for you.
Whenever you're ready, Peter.
Is that projected?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So like we do every year, we take a thorough examination of our MCAS results and we have some things to celebrate and we have some areas to improve upon when we touch on them. The summary notes from the state, these are some of the key takeaways from looking at the state data. The 2023 ELA and math data indicate that the achievement slide from 2019 has halted and recovery is underway. Science results remain relatively unchanged, although slight decreases in achievement. Doing three results signal a need to remain cautious of incoming testing grades that were pre-K through K during the pandemic. We still have significant grounds to make up to reach pre-pandemic achievement levels in some areas. And state results mask varying district results. The next, the next two slides are very data heavy and I'll go slowly. We can do a chance to interpret, we'll do the interpret. So this is statewide, who's flying the gas results by grade. Even though they say that you shouldn't compare it to 2019, they went ahead and compared it to 2019. Like you can see, it changed from 2022. Scores have slightly improved across the state. But if you do go ahead and look at 2019, we are not anywhere close to where we were pre-pandemic.
But those are statewide, those aren't county.
So we move on. So this is a lot of information to take in. These are our results, student achievement at each level. For grade three, we test ELA in math. Grade four, ELA in math. Grade five, ELA math and science and tech. And then in grade six, ELA and math. The number in the first column that they're giving is the combination of student, the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding expectations. Followed with the state average mixed together. Speaking in overall terms, 40% of vetted students in grade six are meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. And in the area of math, 57% of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations.
Where will we at pre-COVID with these numbers, Peter? What were our percentages pre-COVID?
They were definitely higher than this. I don't have the exact numbers with me right now. But very similar to anybody else within the state, we were in a mixed affair. I'll have, I'll have some of those in the upcoming slides, Dan, get the exact numbers.
Any questions so far?
Okay, great. Okay. Tough to read the rumors for us. So this is what you're looking for, Dan. And again, a lot of information in one spot. So grade six, 2019 through 2023 is the very first chunk in the upper left. Grade five is to the right of that. Grade four. And then grade three to the right of that. So if you look at the years past, you can do the math of exceeding or meeting expectations, you'll see roughly where we were. Those are the two key numbers that we're going to use when evaluating these numbers.
And the slide we're looking at now, this is Denit specifically? Is there going to be a slide in here for the state?
Yes.
Okay.
I found it interesting to include our participation rate as well for 2023. And I'll get to the reason why I included that shortly. You can go on to move along if that's okay?
Yep.
So Dan, I think this is what you were looking for, statewide math, MCAS results. And again, they, they compare it to last year, which is good. It looks like most grade levels have increased in '23 from '22. But again, go back to pre-COVID and we're not quite where we would like to be at this point.
Do you have any inclination how the other schools in our district are doing? Are they comparable to our numbers?
I would ask somebody else to speak to that. I had not looked at the other districts very closely.
I think, I think they're, they're similar. But given the smaller population size here at Denit, I think there's sometimes slightly wider. Yeah, swings. But our principals use, have data discussions and use common assessments across all of our schools. So we have pretty good data on how our classrooms are performing. So they work together on that. But the results vary a little bit by, by grade level.
Within a reasonable margin?
Our third grade is higher than the others. I think that's the, that was the bigger standout.
Okay. Good. Any other questions? I think we can keep moving.
And like we did for English flying the gas, these are the Denit 2023 MCAS results in math. Math numbers in grade six are getting to that 70% that we want to look at. If you do look back historically, we, we do have some ups and downs like everybody else does. But we're trying to, again, we're shooting for 70% exceeding and meeting expectations. That's our goal.
We can keep moving.
This area is a bit of an enigma for me because our science scores have always been very, very high. If you look at the results by state here, grade five was only 42% meeting or exceeding expectations. We traditionally have really hit the ball out of the park in the area of science. And fortunately, we, that was not the case last year. This has been a talking point at all grade levels. It's almost unfair that the test is given only in grade five because then grade five is like they own all of it. But this is, this is right from, I hate to say kindergarten rates for grade five. There's a little bit of everything in that science test. And for whatever reason, last year, having 57, 57% of the kids partially meeting expectations, that number's not acceptable to me. So this has been a conversation that we've had.
Do you have any theories on why that is?
When I, when I went back and looked through some of my walkthrough notes, I noticed that I consistently saw ELA, I consistently saw math. I did not as consistently see science being done. I did not as consistently see science being done. I don't know if that was just the time of the day that I was getting out into classrooms. It's something that we're definitely keeping an eye on and making sure that when we're getting out into classrooms, that we are going during science time, so see what's going on. What we're doing meeting for us is we're doing hands-on lessons with the kids.
I'm certainly not trying to plant an answer, but is it possible that in all this downtime with the education with COVID, that science is not something that was readily practiced outside of school? Whereas math and reading are things that students use more readily?
In my opinion, that's a fair statement.
Because I'm not trying to plant an answer, I'm just, I'm guessing if that's part of it. So tired of it, come back into the system and start this curriculum back up?
I think there's some validity to what you're saying, Ben, because I think although the parents took that initiative, yes, we can, we can read together, we can do some math together. I don't know how many people are conducting this experiment still.
Want to keep?
Dance?
Yep.
Absolutely. So student growth statewide on MCAS, this is an area that's very important to all of us. The availability of data allows for a true cohort model for student growth percentile calculations. Again, they should not be compared to 2021, but that's typically what we do. In the five particular levels of growth, student growth percentile of one to nineteen is very low. Growth percentile of twenty to thirty-nine is low. Forty to fifty-nine is typical. Sixty to seventy-nine is high growth. E to ninety-nine is very high growth. In the area of ELA, Dennett shows typical growth forty with higher achievement compared to the state. Typical growth, in my opinion, is okay. I think we can do that.
Historically, have we done better?
Yes.
Okay.
Historically, we're higher than nineteen?
Correct.
Yep. The. Is there any concern about us getting past typical growth, back into the higher or even better, very high growth? Is that something we're trending towards or are we kind of stagnant where we're at?
This challenges me to answer because of everything that's happened in the last couple of years. We were on a nice path for a long time and it just kind of got thrown up the window with everything that's happened with COVID. I'm not trying just to blame COVID. That's not, not the solution or it's not the answer. But we were definitely trending in a better direction prior to it.
Okay.
So that was ELA. And we're showing, again, typical growth that had a higher number, forty-five, and higher achievement in math as compared to the state. So typical growth in the two major areas of ELA and math. So when that, that's just a question, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. So our assessment participation, we've been labeled as quote, requiring assistance or intervention by testing. And the reason we got that designation was because our participation rate within one subgroup was below the required ninety-five percent. Without getting specifically naming names, I had a handful of people that did not want their children to take the test. And it was, it only took a handful of people to drop us below that ninety-five percent. The solution to that is we're going to work with our families throughout the school year to try to get them to understand the importance of having students participate in the test.
How do you plan on doing that, Peter?
I'm sorry.
How do you plan on working with the families? Because from my perspective as a parent and from what I've heard from other parents is the kids are just so stressed about the idea of MCAS. A lot of times they really carry that with them and when they go home and they're telling their parents, they're really stressed. That might be why they're pulling back and opting them out of taking the test. Because the kids are so afraid to do poorly on it. And they really take it heavily. And I've heard it across the board from so many different families, that concern. So I don't know like why that is a common thing with the kids, but I think that's something that should probably be addressed because the parents are going to hear about it at the dinner table every night from the kids.
Well, I agree with that statement and it's a very delicate balance of yes, we want it, it's important, we want you to do well. The language that we typically use with our kids is just, just do the best you can do it. That's always that. Just do the best you can do it. I think inherently there is stress and pressure around this test. I believe that. And the families that chose to have their children not take the test, I can understand why because it was creating enormous amount of stress. Our goal this year is to work with those students, just to have them, have conversations with them. This is important because. So we don't want to have that designation of requiring assistance or intervention.
What, what does that do to us? What does that designation mean for us as a school?
There isn't any specific action plan that needs to be taken at this time. I just, I, we're, for me, it's almost an ego thing. We're better than that. We don't require assistance or intervention. That's, that's not them.
So it's, it's a stigma, but it's not going to impede us moving forward?
I don't believe so. Dr. Fu, can you speak to that?
Yes, there's a corrective action plan. Steps that the, that the school will need to take, but it doesn't. Again, it, it's extra work that the school will have to go through in order to try to improve the attendance rate.
And the families that this impacted last year, we've already begun having those conversations, very in-depth conversations. I very much anticipate that we're not going to be in a similar situation when our kids take it again in the spring.
And what does this percentage have to come up to, to get rid of that designation? If we're at ninety-five, what's it got to be above?
You, you have to be at ninety-five. So we slipped and we're at below that percent for one of our subgroups. And so that was the reason for the citation.
It's only twelve kids.
We're just going to say, how many kids is going?
That's exactly right. I mean, we're talking about three kids, I think, five sections total of the MCAS.
Yeah.
You know, so it's because we're that small, those few children, those couple of sections that weren't taken, it has a significant impact on us.
Okay.
So if conversations are being had with the families that potentially opted out, what about those that were identified as not meeting expectations or partially? Because I know we get as parents printouts. So if you see your child's doing very poorly, you may be more apt to not have them participate next time. Not that you're necessarily sharing it. I mean, other parents differently with their kid, but that could be stress inducing. So I'm just wondering how conversations have been with those families just to like encourage them like that the next year, continue to have your child do the best and not opt out.
I would answer that, Pete. I mean, that's certainly a good point and something to keep in mind. I think that the designation that we got, not meeting expectation, it just sort of, you know, raises our awareness that if, if families or children are, you know, expressing stress or expressing, you know, oh, we may not have the student, you know, take the test. I think it's incumbent upon us now to really be sitting down with those families and talking through it and talking with the children, supporting them. And, you know, just making sure that we're opening up that dialogue on an individualized basis. You know, I think our doors are always open. And I think that seeing us kind of fall below that number for us, that was, that's a significant event. And we need to do everything that we can to make sure kids and families feel supported so that we're not there again. And the kids do get the practice setting and taking the test. But it's, yeah.
Do we know how many of the three hundred some odd towns in Massachusetts have this designation?
Probably find that out on the website. Desi has a website with all the profiles and data that's, that has public access, but I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
It's less than twenty percent, but I can find the number.
It's fifty or sixty towns. Would it be advantageous to begin a campaign to educate the families that are involved, to make sure they stay involved? Even if it was just on a somewhat of a surface level, not a full deep dive into the importance of MCAS? Because there may be some families that are teetering on the edge. And if we were to get two of those three back and then lose four more that were teetering.
Right.
We could be right back to where we were at.
Yeah.
That's a good point. We should look at that.
Sounds like a point. I would do a lot of work, I think, preparing the children as best we can to take the test. Particularly those third graders are like, ah, you know, because it's the first time they're doing it. Our third grade, I think, does a wonderful job preparing those kids to sit for the test for the first time. But I think your point is well taken. We haven't gone that extra step in terms of sort of preparing the families and sort of educating them about, you know, just sort of processing what it is and what we do to get the kids ready to take the test too and all the work that goes into that. That's a good point.
Yeah, even if, at the very least, just the importance of it and just reminding people that you guys are open for questions and any kind of dialogue to start up, even if it is family initiated. Just getting that awareness, that ball rolling might be beneficial.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's like I said, with our number so low, two, two students really puts us behind the eight ball.
Any points well taken. We could get back those two kids and we could lose four others.
Yep. Okay.
Christine, we can talk more about that.
Agreed.
Thank you. So all that being said, what are our next steps? What are we doing to improve the problem? We have a support team to identify students who need more support interventions than their progress monitor. We have data means kindergarten through grade six to identify and target interventions for math and reading. Some of the things that we use to measure those are MCAS, DIBELS and STAR data. We're making sure that we're complying with early literacy screening regulations. We're doing more enhanced co-teaching and instruction model to provide support in the classroom. And we have undertaken a school-wide TBIS initiative to improve positive student culture. And we already started to see the results from that. Christine and I sat down and had a look at some results. I know it's small, I apologize. The top piece of information is from our panorama survey from February, that should be 2023. I apologize for that. These areas of supportive relationships, social awareness, self-management, growth mindset, self-efficacy, grit and emotion regulation were all measured in February of 2023 and that's how we did. We just did this survey at the end of October and we've seen improvement in every single category. And this is all students' grades three through five. So Christine and I made the quantum leap that, you know, maybe the PBIS stuff that we are undertaking is actually already starting to have an effect. We're starting to see that there needs numbers in the survey. So I think that's a real positive takeaway from all the artwork that has gone into PBIS.
How often are we surveying these non-cognitives? Twice, beginning of the year.
Yeah. And it's not, it's not on here, but the grade six, actually, their test looks a little bit different. So they kind of, we do like a three through five version and then the sixth graders kind of get more of a middle school version. And it's not on this slide, but the difference in our sixth grade results from last year versus this year were through the roof. Grade six just looked amazing going all the way down the columns. And I, I think PBIS has a lot to do with that. Their numbers were very different last year. So it was really nice for Pete and I to kind of review all the data and be able to really see, you know, with measure, you know, measurable data, you know, the difference. Because of last time our kids were surveyed and what they're looking like now. So that was great.
Did we benchmark prior to PBIS?
Yeah, we did the panorama last year too, twice. So like what you're seeing at the top there, that was the, the spring data for three through five. And we had done it in the fall of last year as well. And then that bottom one is our new data from this year and it was the same with grade six. So it was, it was nice to see us all in the green, all the way over here, you know, across the board. And a lot of work was done with our teachers last year around grit because that was something that was really low for us. So that was great for us to kind of see that, you know, come up nicely when they compared us to the national averages.
And the logic behind that being the kids are feeling good about themselves, they're feeling good about their classroom, they're feeling good about their teachers, feeling good about themselves. Hopefully this score will start to improve on the academic side too.
What do the numbers look like in the other towns in the district? Do you know?
Ours, we did get to, yeah, we did get to see those. I think, you know, depending upon the grade level in the area, they kind of vary. Some are kind of similar, but ours were really strong. You know, going all the way down across the board. So that was, that was nice to see. We could see them for the district.
What about, and what about last year, the last testing, would it be similar as well or? I'm just wondering if we had a substantial jump this time.
In some areas we were lower.
Okay.
Of course, this is early correlated to MCAS. I just thought that it was an interesting data point to share with you.
Thank you.
Do we evaluate academic self-efficacy? Is that part of that? I'm not familiar with that.
Well, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the questions in here really do relate to like the kids' perceptions about their academics in terms of, you know, how confident they feel, you know, how much awareness they have. This is super small, so it's hard for me to, oh, there we go. So I mean, a lot of the questions really are around how they're themselves as workers and kind of how they're feeling and how supportive they're feeling. And I will say, because we're so small, it's easy to go through the, the results kid by kid.
Right.
And, you know, some of them are kind of like, yeah, that's right. You know, it, it's very interesting to me to see like the kids really are pretty accurate readers of themselves, you know? And the kiddos that do have like one area that's a little lower here or there, knowing those kids, it's like, yeah, that's, that's an accurate area. That's something that we work on.
So if you're seeing like a nice deeper dive into that, when we were able to look at individual kids, how are they feeling about themselves last year? What were they reporting last year and what were they reporting now? And a lot of improvement, a lot of, a lot of real positive information, you know, which is good for us to know.
And they do an overall for every kid, they have, you know, like you can be in the red, you can be in the yellow, you can be green, you can be like really green, which is where you want them. And so it was neat to see like some of those, a lot of those kids actually who were red last year or yellow and on the borderline, like they were moving over. Red's moving over to yellow or red to green, you know, or yellow to green, you know? So it was neat to see some of those kids that we kind of flagged last year and see the growth coming into this year. So that's what we want to see.
That's it.
Yeah.
Just a point of information for your earlier question, it's fifteen percent have that designation, requiring assistance or intervention. It's fifteen percent statewide.
Thank you.
Right. So on to compensation rates and daily substitute employees.
All right. So around this time last year, we looked at substitute rates largely because on January first of 2023, the minimum wage increased. If we didn't increase our subrates, we would have been below minimum wage. I think it probably makes sense for us to do this roughly once a year, look at our subrates. So I am proposing to the committee four things. The first one is that we have a slight bump to the daily subrate from one oh seven to one ten. The rationale for this is that we look at neighboring communities and that is the median rate. And I think we want to try to find that balance of being competitive, but not having our hourly rates exceed the, the starting rate of paraprofessionals. And that feels like that is roughly in that sweet spot. That would be at working six hours and forty minutes a day, sixteen dollars and fifteen cents an hour, which is slightly below that step one rate in pretty much all the communities in the region. The second proposal would be to create a daily substitute rate for paraprofessionals. Right now, that doesn't exist and I recently learned, and this was news to me, that we were paying, or we are paying, our substitute paraprofessionals the hourly rate. So people are actually making more money if they substitute for a paraprofessional than a teacher. I think for obvious reasons, we want to incentivize people to take the teaching positions. So I would propose that we make that a hundred and four dollars a day. That would be fifteen dollars and sixteen cents an hour, again, above minimum wage, but below the daily rate of our starting pairs. I would also propose that we start this on January first for the following reasons. I would love for this to be consistent across all the, the communities in the region so that we're not competing against each other. This would allow me to make these proposals and have the committees weigh in, the committees weigh in and vote before then. And lastly is that my understanding is that there has been custodians here, but you're getting paid eighteen dollars an hour to substitute. I don't think that's ever been codified. I don't think that's ever been changed recently. So that's the lowest rate in the region. And so I would recommend that the committee bump that to nine. And so I would recommend that the committee bump that to $19 an hour, make it more in line with the other communities in the region, and just so that we have some of that form of codify.
How many subs, substitutes do we generally use in a year's time? Do you know?
Jeez. I mean, I think there's an awful lot of people in the list, probably north of 100, but how many regularly take assignments? I'd have to do some research in the back, too. I feel like I'd just be making up a number.
I'm just trying to, I mean, that small, like, $3 bump, it just seems such an insignificant amount for how much we use it.
Well, that's a day, right? That's a $3 bump a day. So that's a cool, what, $19.01 an hour? Give or take?
It just, you know, if, if we're only using 50 subs a year, 100 subs a year, if you could ballpark that number.
Right. So I guess my, I want to understand the spirit of your question. I'm not sure whether we're getting at the cost involved or whether we're thinking philosophically about why don't we just make it higher? So the second one is actually the easier question for me to answer. We could make it higher, and I don't think it's going to be a budget buster. I think what we need to be careful of is creating a substitute rate that makes it more lucrative to be a substitute teacher than to be a parent professional. And, and that, as I think, that's why you don't want it too high.
You said there's a list of over 100. How many, how far do you have to go down that list before you find a substitute?
It's all automated. So basically, the way it's set up is that if you're on a substitute, you pick which buildings you want to work at, and it's all tied into the absence management system. So for example, if I'm a fourth grade teacher and I, you know, either that morning or the night before say I'm sick, then anybody who's signed up to take an assignment, like, everybody will either get an email or a phone call or a text message, depending on how, whether how they've signed up and then they, so I, I honestly, I don't know exactly how it works behind the scenes. I mean, I think probably sometimes some assignments get picked up quickly and then some don't ever get filled.
Let me ask you a better question. Is there ever a time where a substitute is needed and we can't fill it?
Yes.
Okay. So it seems like that's a problem.
I think that's a problem that everyone's in a school and.
Not one solved by wage.
I don't, my intent here, I don't think this is, this wage proposal is going to have a transformative impact on your retention rate. I think what my biggest goals that I was trying to achieve here was making sure that we weren't paying people more to substitute as a parent professional and as a teacher and keeping us competitive with wage rates in the region.
The, any other discussion? Entertain a motion to accept the proposal, moving the teacher subrate from 107 to 110 daily, the parent subrate established at 104, and the custodial rate from 18 to 19 per hour. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And, which is your glasses?
Thank you.
All right. Business services. Christine, financial report?
Thank you. In your practice this evening, you do have a copy of the financial. I have a copy of the one.
I booked that out.
All right, all right, good. I just wanted to mention that at the very beginning, there was one small isolated deficit of $29, and that's just from, that's our Mass Association School. We pay dues on an annual basis for this support, because that's based on our enrollment. And Dennett's enrollment increased a little more than I had built into the budget, so we have a deficit of $28. Other than that, if we go to page three of the detail, you see there is a deficit currently in special education transportation. The deficit that's reflected right now is $105,000. That is based, that does not include any circuit breaker reimbursement. One's circuit breaker reimbursement is calculated with that word, about $65,000 of a deficit. Now, transportation, tuition, and contract services, the other two accounts do not have a deficit right now, and the way the town budgets that area, it's all combined. So some of the times, the surplus of one area will help offset the deficit in another area. But this is just the one account. I wanted to bring your attention. We're fairly early in the year, but we have encumbered everything that we know of right now through the end of the year. So if nothing changes, this is what we expect to be for the end of the year in this one account. As we go through the year, we get a better sense of where that will land and also the other accounts in that area, where they will land, so that we can have a prediction of where we'll be financially, if there's some other adjustments that need to be made, do we need to request a transfer from the town. It's a little early to know all of that, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that it existed right now. The one other thing I wanted to mention is, just following that, out of, out of district vocational, I budgeted for, with, uh, two students attending, we have one student currently attending, so there will be a surplus in that area. We don't traditionally get movements in those accounts during the year, so that's where we are right now, it's just the one student. So I anticipate that we'll have a surplus in that area. And just, just to remind, this is a snapshot of where we are right now at this point in time. Things do change though, yeah, but as of right now, there's, we're not seeing anything that's extraordinary, that it would cause a significant impact to our financial statements. Are there any questions?
For me? Any other questions? Motion to accept the financial report?
A second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
And Ryan, you're up.
Thank you. Just have a quick update for curriculum instruction and assessment. As everybody knows, tomorrow's a professional development day for teachers. It's voting day in the town, so students don't have school, but teachers do. So our goals for tomorrow are just focusing on using data and building our support teams. So myself and Dr. Panerisi and our principals are working on increasing our capacity with multi-tiered system of supports, and that's ensuring that all students are getting the interventions they need, whether they're, they're needing more or needing more challenge to extend their learning. So staff will have a basic presentation in the morning that will be presented by principals and members of the district, multi-tiered system of support team. And then the remainder of the day, teachers will have time to analyze some of the data that was presented earlier by Ms. Markelani and Mr. Venito, having to do with panorama and also our benchmark assessments, which include DIBELS, STAR math, STAR reading. So teachers don't have a lot of time to work together and do data analysis. We're grateful for the opportunity to be able to do that and then think about how that data can inform ongoing instruction. And then later in the day, there'll be time for people to work together to think about how to use those interventions. So that's a little bit of a plan for how the professional development day will be used tomorrow. And after tomorrow, there's one last professional development day in March.
Mike, can I possibly just answer their question about where the panorama data fell compared to the district? Is that okay?
Please.
So I just looked it up for you. So in every area for grades three through five, we were between 1 and 12% above the district. And for grade six, in the three main areas that they provide documentation on, teacher-student relationships, rigorous expectations of school safety, we were between 16 and 22% above. So that was a significant difference for us.
Christine, can you just, I'm sorry, may I ask? Please, go ahead. Do you mind just clicking nationally to when you perform that? And then overall, my recollection of that was that a lot of our indicators, both for Dennett and the other schools, are mostly ahead of the curve as well nationally?
Yep. So for, so this shows me where Dennett is nationally, right here. And so everything's 99 percentile, 99 percentile, 99th, 79th, 79th, 99th. That's three through five. And then grade six was 99 percentile across the board.
Are there any areas that are concerning or surprising to you?
Um, there was, there was no areas that was concerning. I think I was happily surprised that the grade scores came up the way that they did. And I was also happily surprised to see the significant difference in the grade six scores, because those were an area of significant concern for us last year. We put a lot of time into trying to figure out where that came from, you know, in terms of what was happening, the cohort kiddos that we had last year. So this was just awesome for us to see, you know, those numbers come up. I knew they would be higher. I didn't know that they were going to be this much higher, and that's a tribute to our grade six.
This is probably a question I shouldn't ask out loud, but is it possible the grade six changes were more significantly changed by the, the sixth, the new sixth graders? Or something the school has been doing?
I think, I think it's probably a combination of a lot of things. I think it's a different cohort of kids. And we are small enough that I can say that honestly. I also think that they have really taken hold of not just the PBIS pieces that we have implemented across the school, but also all the different other things that grade six sort of does just as part of their routines and incentives and, you know, positive feedback for the kids. I think a lot of things kind of came together. I'm hoping that when we test these things, sixth graders, as they're moving towards being middle schoolers, that they're just as strong in the spring as they are right now.
I know, with a sixth grader myself, it's a presumptive question.
Uh, so, you know, so we'll kind of see. So I think it was a combination of a lot of things.
Okay. Thank you. And Dr. Brooke?
Thank you. In your packet, there are a number of different charts, and I'll explain why. Some of them seem to be duplicated, but they're not. So the first one is the October 1, 2023 enrollment with pre-K listed to the far left. Interestingly enough, we looked back as far as we could, and we have never presented the October 1 enrollments with pre-K included. And the reason why it stood out to us this year is we're looking to add pre-K to the regional agreement. So we have added pre-K to the enrollment, and you'll notice that to the far left, because we wanted to, to keep the, the flow of grade levels, even though you'll see it's highlighted in blue, because if it is accepted by all three towns, it will become part of the Silver Lake enrollment numbers. Okay? And then assessed to the towns accordingly, based upon their, their population. So if you, if you go down to the far left, you'll see each of the towns listed, Halifax, Kingston, Plimpton is in the gold-orange color. You have 251 as of October 1 in Dennett Elementary, in the middle school and high school, and pre-K totals are 174, for a grand total of 425 Plimpton students across all of our Now, the second chart is the assessments with pre-K included. So the very first part of the Union 31 and Silver Lake pre-K total enrollments, October 21, has Union and Silver Lake enrollment by town and year. If you go down to the next section, it gives you the FY25 assessments to the far left, and it gives a multi-year comparison, so you can go all the way back to 2020. Halifax is increasing in 2025. Kingston and Plimpton are decreasing in their Silver Lake assessments. However, in the shared cost percentages for 25, Halifax is decreasing and Kingston and Plimpton are actually increasing. So those numbers are there with the pre-K numbers, assuming, hoping that the pre-K is accepted as part of the regional agreement. October 1 is then listed here in the way it's always traditionally been presented to you without pre-K. And so you can see that the Plimpton enrollment for the elementary is still 251, the middle school, high school totals are 169, but the grand total for Silver Lake is 420, for, the entire region is 420, because the pre-K is not included. Also, you have the corresponding assessment percentages, not only for Silver Lake, but for Union 31, without pre-K included. So again, Halifax is increasing, Kingston and Plimpton are decreasing for the FY25 assessment, Silver Lake, but with the shared cost, once again, Halifax is, is going down for their Union 31 shared cost percentage. Plimpton and Ha, and Kingston are going up. That's why you have four separate charts, and two of them appear to be the same. So the next is the total enrollment charts, and you'll see through grades K through six. This is just K through six. Plimpton has increased by 10 students, and if you look at grades seven through 12 without pre-K included, Plimpton has increased by one student. With pre-K, the second set of charts, that looks very similar, but again, this time you're with pre-K included. K through six is the same, because it's just K through six, and you have the increase of 10 students. But if you look at Plimpton numbers, you have an increase of six when we include the pre-K numbers. The next chart is homeschool enrollment, and you can see the numbers from homeschool has increased by one since the last couple of years at four students. We've increased to five students who are homeschooling.
Is that Dennett or District?
That's for Dennett. Yep. District-wide, overall, the numbers have decreased substantially, especially since 2020, which was at an all-time high, if you look at the, the, yeah. But even in FY28, we had some pretty high num, FY18, the numbers were pretty high. And then they went up sharply during COVID. Seven through 12 homeschool enrollment has actually increased by three students from But overall, the numbers have decreased in homeschool enrollment, grades seven through 12. The next item in your packet is the budget development and planning schedule. We are scheduled for a joint meeting on November 16th. This is when our Director of Student Services, our Technology Director, and our Elementary Coordinator will talk about current and possible future program needs. In January, we typically give you, present an FY25 preliminary budget over the month, and we have started talking with our directors, but also our principals with regards to their needs for the upcoming school year, and they have begun compiling their budget We, at this point, like to ask the school committee for their goals and priorities in terms of the budget and what they would like for us to consider as we begin creating these budgets prior to our January presentation. So if you have particular items that you would like for us to consider, we certainly would, would love to, to hear from you on that prior to the January. Of course, during January, as more things become clear or available, there's always opportunities to add things. But again, we want to remind you that we are certainly open to any input that you may have with regard to the budget process and what we're focused on. And that is all I have for tonight.
Okay.
That's it.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
What we do, Zach, can we just talk real quick about the bullet incident that happened a little while ago?
Good point.
Oh, it's not, it's not on the agenda. And again, I would defer to Principal Venito, maybe under his school update, it could fall into that category, but I would remind Principal Venito not to disclose any student identifying information.
Okay.
Okay. The night of parent conferences, we had the student who was on school grounds and had three live bullets on his person. He then was showing another student. The other student signaled an adult that was on the playground, but the adult took those rounds, gave them to me, and I called the police to properly dispose of them. There was an investigation by the police. The young man said that he found him on the side of the road on the way here. Police did a search that night, we did a search in the morning, they found nothing. And that was, that was the end of it.
So the, the police deemed that there was no credible threat? The, the parents of the students involved were, were contacted, and there was an investigation conducted?
Do we know the? Do we know the origin of, was it on the side of the road? Like, that's, I guess, my concern, other parents have reached out, is the origin of the bullets.
The, the police did not find any, any package containing any of the rounds as the child described, so they can't confirm that there was anything just lying on the road.
I don't know how much of this you know or could even get into. During the course of the investigation, was there, I don't want to ask this, were there guns comparable to the bullets found, registered to that family and that domicile? Is it possible, I guess the simpler question, is it possible those bullets came from home and the story of finding them on the side of the road was fictitious?
This is a strong possibility.
And is there any further follow-up with the parents on securing firearms and live rounds of ammunition?
I believe the police were having that conversation. Yes.
Is there an avenue for us to get an update on that?
I can speak with the police chief and see what, what information they share beyond what we've already discussed here.
Okay. I don't know that I can beat that anymore. That's about to the core as I can get without asking specific questions, I guess. Does anybody have to follow up to that? Peter, is that something that we could, we could try and have an answer to those questions one way or the other by our next meeting?
Certainly. Okay. I have no problem with that. I'm not sure exactly if the police are going to be comfortable sharing with me, but we have a very good working relationship and we'll see what we can do, absolutely.
Yeah. So our next meeting's December 11th. We have a joint meeting on November 16th, but not only is that short time, but I don't know that it's pertinent information to be discussing at a joint meeting. So if we could, unless someone thinks otherwise, I think December 11th would be a, a good point to try and have some answers or information.
It seems reasonable.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. All in favor? Nice having it. Thank you.
Thank you.